Good evening and welcome to the August 25th meeting of council. We appreciate you joining us tonight. And we are going to begin our meeting this evening as we begin all of our meetings. And that is asking God's presence in our midst during our deliberations. I want to ask Councilor Jerry Pops Barnes, if he would, to please. Counselor Barnes, if you'll hit that mic button, I'll turn you on up here. There you are, sir.
Let's pray. Most graceful and loving Father, blessed be your holy and your majestic name. Lord and giver of all, from all wisdom floats from you, we ask you, Father God, to graciously join us in this mission, Father, and spread your wisdom across us as we take care of the business at hand. And as always, Lord, we come to you through the almighty grace of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. It's always through him that we pray to you, Father. And with that, we say, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Counselor. If you would, please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This is a special meeting. We have a rare treat. We have an opportunity to see our newest elected council representative sworn in today. So at this particular time, we're going to ask if there's any family of Ms. Toya Tucker that wants to join her at the podium, and our judges will swear her in.
Judge McBride and I are, I guess you're going to hold the Bible. You're going to raise your right hand and put your left hand on the Bible. Are you ready? And then, well, you're going to get two oaths, as I said. Judge McBride's going to do one following me. And, well, can you all hear me?
No, barely. Do we have a handheld mic or something?
How's this?
That's better.
Well, thank you. My name's Mark D'Antonio. I'm the Muskogee County Probate Court Judge, and I'm pleased and honored to be here along with Judge McBride. And I'm also pleased and honored to be part of this ceremony. Ms. Tucker, if you will, let me have you raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will well and truly discharge the duties of Commissioner for Council District Four, Columbus, Muskogee County, Georgia, in all matters which may require your official action to the best of your knowledge and skill? And will you act in your judgment with what will be the most conducive to the welfare and best interests of the entire county? Do you further swear or affirm you've been a resident thereof for the time required by the Constitution and the laws of this state, and that you've been a resident of District Four, Columbus, Georgia, for the time required by law? Do you further solemnly swear or affirm that you are not the holder of any unaccounted-for public money due this state, or any political subdivision or authority thereof, and that you are not the holder of any office of trust under the government of the United States, or any other state, or any foreign state, which you are prohibited from holding by the laws of the state of Georgia, and that you are otherwise qualified to hold the office according to the Constitution of the United States, and that you will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state? Congratulations, and Judge McBride.
It is my honor to administer the separate oath, and I'm going to ask that you simply raise your right hand. And what I will do is I will state the oath in its entirety, and at the end, you can indicate your oath or affirmation by saying I do. I, Toya Tucker, do hereby swear or affirm that I will well, truly, and faithfully perform the duties of counselor of Columbus, Georgia, to the best of my ability, and that I will support and defend the charter thereof, as well as the Constitution and laws of the state of Georgia and of the United States of America. I do further solemnly swear and affirm that I am not the holder of any public money due this state unaccounted for, that I am not the holder of any office of trust under the government of the United States, nor of either of the several states, or of any foreign state, and that I am otherwise qualified to hold said office according to the Constitution of the United States and laws of Georgia, and that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state, so help me God. Congratulations. All right. Good job.
I'm going to get you to sign it. Yes, you will. Thanks, Judge.
I married Ms. Tucker.
You did.
Well, I'm happy and honored to have done so. You can if you're... I'm a little shy.
Counselor Tucker?
I just wanted to say thank you, and it's an honor to not only be able to do this oath. I was, he actually married us. So, I mean, when I saw him, I was just so excited, and still excited. I appreciate you.
Well, and I'm very happy to be here. I hope someday, very soon, I can get back to performing marriages in the courthouse.
Yeah. So, thank you.
Take care.
Thank you, Counselor. And I want to make note that former Councilor for District and Mayor Pro Tem Evelyn Turner-Pugh is here.
Okay, okay. Many of you may know, I am here. I do accredit me being here because of Mayor Pro Tem Evelyn Turner-Pugh. I went up to her, I worked on her campaign in 2016, and I spoke to her about my aspirations of becoming a counselor. And she opened her arms and her home to me and my entire family, and she is my adopted mom, seriously. I appreciate her. I've learned a lot about city government from her, and just how to be the counselor that's going to be for the people. So, I appreciate Ms. Evelyn Turner-Pugh, Mayor Pro Tem.
And I think it's safe to say, if your last name doesn't begin with T, do not try to run for District Four. You go from Turner to Thompson to Tucker. Also want to welcome back Counselor Mimi Woodson. Glad to see you in person. And also want to say happy birthday to Counselor Garrett. You're 18 now? That's coming from somebody my age. You seem 18, but it's a happy birthday. All right. First order of business is to accept the minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes? Or you have a correction? Yes? Yes, sir.
Just the back and forth between you and me last time at council was because I'm still upset that I was told that an officer was just a little aggressive and did not know the details and severity of the incident until a citizen directed me to a video on Facebook. That is not reflected in the minutes. It needs to be.
It should be. And I will make that correction. Madam Clerk? Thank you. All right. I have a motion in the second to accept the motion, the minutes as amended. Mayor Pro Tem. I think Counselor Crabbe made the second, didn't you? To approve, do I have a second to approve as amended? Counselor Crabbe made the second. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, they are approved. All right. Before we get to some of the updates, I want to let the city manager bring up our tax assessor, the chief of presbytery tax assessor Suzanne Whitehouse. She has some information that she wants to share to the community.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for getting me on at the last second. Thank you, Mr. City Manager, as well, for getting me in. It's just been brought to our attention that we have an extended appeal period now, thanks to an order that came down from the Chief Justice of the Supreme Court for the state of Georgia. And he signed that order on August 11th. Department of Revenue did a bulletin that finally made its way to us at the end of last week. And so here we are to let everybody know that the appeal period for ad valorem taxation purposes is actually going to expire on the 27th of this month. Notices that were sent out in May indicated that the appeal period would end the 29th of June for personal property, or the 5th of July for real property. Because of COVID, there was an extension that was granted. Unfortunately, they have not given us a whole lot of notice about this. So, we have come running here to let folks in the community know that they do have until the 27th of August. If they missed their appeal period previously, then we will be happy to assist in handling their appeals. If they had filed late, we still had all of those appeals, they will all be processed as if they were filed timely. So, there was, there's no issue there. We had about 40 of those that previously, people had been told they were late. They are not late now, thanks to this order, and those are all being filed. We will accept the appeals in person. They can be postmarked by the 27th of August. We cannot accept them by email. I do apologize for that, but if they have any questions, my office would be happy to assist them. The appeal form is available on the website, so they can go in and download it. If they need any assistance filing, all they need to do is just contact us at the tax assessor's office.
That's great news. Thank you, ma'am, very much for bringing that to our attention. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and just a question. So, I believe I called you some time ago about a neighbor, and it was too late to appeal.
That's no longer the case for them.
So, I need to go to my neighbor and make sure he's hearing this message.
Exactly.
Because he has until...
Thursday.
Thursday.
Yep.
So, I will make a personal visit to my neighbor, and I'm saying this because, and that's a good example, because I do want people to really hear the message.
Absolutely.
That, and we're putting it on our website.
It is on the website. It's running as, I believe it's running as a cryon, where's my, as a cryon on the CCGTV.
CCGTV.
Running across the bottom. And, you know, of course, we wanted to get out here because, you know, a lot of folks tune in for these meetings, and so this was a great opportunity to get it out there this way.
Okay. Thank you for coming and sharing that information.
Absolutely.
Thanks, sir. Counselor Huff?
Yes, I just wanted you to reiterate that date and remind them that that date is this Thursday, two days from now.
It is two days from now. That's exactly right. It is Thursday, so as long as they're in the mail and postmarked by Thursday, that's all they need to, that's all they need to do. And like I said, my office is perfectly willing to assist. If they just pick up the phone and call us, we'll work with folks to get their appeals in on a timely basis.
All right. Thank you, ma'am, very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right. Wanted to give an update that's not on the agenda, but I wanted to make sure everybody was caught up to speed. I know I've talked to some of the counselors. At the request of Counselor Thompson, or Counselor Thompson, at the request of Counselor Thomas, we were asked in the mayor's office to put together a small group that could work on mediation, as Counselor Garrett and Counselor Barnes referred to it, some type of negotiation of the two variations of the ordinances that have been brought forward regarding the Public Safety Advisory Commission. So, we have, I just wanted to make sure the public knew we have been moving on that. We have put together, we heard from the last individual today that has agreed to serve on it. And I want to thank the people that have reached out and offered to serve. But I'll tell you, this committee is not the mayor's committee. This committee will become whatever it decides it needs to be to be able to be effective. The only thing the mayor is going to do is not to share opinions or anything. It's just to try to shepherd this across the finish line, to try to come up with something that they can bring back, and the community can work with. But the, we were very intentional about picking a very small group so that we could make some headway. Now, if this group decides it wants to expand, that's up to the group. We also wanted to make sure that since it is going to be somewhat of a mediation, as mentioned by Counselor Garrett, that it was equally balanced, with the same number of people who had advocated for subpoena power as those who objected to subpoena power. So, we have gotten commitments from the following individuals. We put the three counselors, who were instrumental in wanting to move towards a committee like this. So, we've got Counselor Barnes, Counselor Thomas, and Counselor Garrett. And then we have received commitments from State Representative Carolyn Hughley, Ms. Shamika Avery, Mr. Tyson Begley, Reverend Adrian Chester, and Major Freddie Blackman as a representative from the Police Department. That's eight individuals, four that had advocated for subpoena power, four that were in opposition to that. So, we will have the first meeting, now that we've got the committee solidified, we got the last agreement today. We expect to try to have the initial meeting. If we can't get it pulled together this week, we'll do it the very first part of next week. And then we'll give further updates as the committee warrants. But I did just want to let everybody know that we were asked to try to put this together. This is where we've started. I do have some names of other people. If the committee decides they want to add a larger number, our opinion was that we can get a little bit more work done quicker and earlier if we have a smaller committee group. So, an update on COVID-19. We continue to struggle with the pandemic in Columbus, Georgia. We have seen our numbers get a little bit better. Some of the trends have gone down a little bit. Our rolling seven-day average has now dropped into the 30s, and that's great news, but if you do the math, that's still over 200 new cases on average each week. So, we are getting a little bit better, but we're not where we need to be. The hospitalization rate has plateaued, and it seems to be staying fairly consistent, around 61 up to 65 people hospitalized at any given time with, that have been diagnosed with COVID-19. That, too, is great news. Until you look back, just back to April, when we had our surge, and we were 20% lower then than we are now. So, we are still in a situation where any kind of surge is going to have the opportunity or possibility of overwhelming our hospitals. And that is the part that we look at, and we've looked at very closely all along, to make sure that we had the resources to be able to manage the people who not only have COVID, but that the hospitals also have the resources to manage the individuals who are sick or in the hospital for other reasons. So, we also, as a result of that, you know that the governor changed his order a week ago last Friday, that would allow local control to a degree with regard to requiring masks. He did put some stipulations, and that one was that any place of business that did not want to have it enforced in their business could opt out. They could put a sign in the window that the mask ordinance was not being enforced in their premises, and that's fine. So, we did put a mask, through executive order, a mask mandate in place last Friday. Now, that will be on the table today for this council to look at and vote on and ratify. But the simplest way to put this is you don't have to wear a mask 24/7. If you're outside and you're walking with a spouse or somebody you cohabitate with, just going to get a bite to eat, you don't have to wear your mask. If you are walking down Broadway in the middle of market days, you need a mask. If you can't socially distance yourself, you need to wear a mask. If you go into a building that does not have a sign that says that the enforcement is not applied in that building, you have to have a mask. Couple of things I want to make a point of, this is not a political deal. A mask is not a political weapon. There are those that have tried to turn it into one, but this is very simply about public safety, and it's about preserving our economy. Because the more, it's been proven that wearing a mask will help to some degree stop the continued spread of this virus. So, we want folks to remember that this is not about a punitive action to try to raise revenue, or to try to go out there and give tickets. Matter of fact, the process will be that our law enforcement officers, if indeed they need to remind somebody you need to have a mask on in a certain situation, they'll give them a mask, educate them as to the requirement, and then move on. So, we're grateful to the residents of Muskogee County for what they have done up to this point in complying with the social distancing, the mask-wearing, and washing their hands, and all the other things that we've heard from the CDC. Because frankly, that's why, even though we've got some smaller counties with a much higher per 100,000 residents rate of infection than we do, and we're right on a border community where we get thousands of people crossing the bridge, coming from Alabama to Georgia, and going from Georgia back to Alabama every day, we have still been able to do a pretty good job of holding our numbers. What this mask mandate does is it does what we've been striving to do the whole time, and that's stay in front of the emergency stage. I remember at the very early stages of this, I knew, I heard the governor of California say that if it's an easy decision, you've waited too long. Because then the, you know, it's like turning the tap off once the bathtub's already overflowing. So, the time to do that is before it starts overflowing. So, I commend the residents, I commend this council for entertaining this particular action. It is absolutely the right thing to do, given the situation that we're facing. I'm, I think, I talked to the city manager, and I think what we're going to do now is we have a COVID CARES update that is on his agenda, and we're going to, because we're tanning it in with the COVID update, I'm going to ask Deputy City Manager Pam Hodge to come forward and give us a briefing. Mr. City Manager, do you have anything?
Mr. Mayor, yes. I just thank you for allowing me to bring this up on the agenda, and really want to thank Deputy City Manager Lisa Goodwin, Deputy City Manager Hodge, and our Finance Director, Angelica Alexander. They have worked on a team, and with Deputy City Manager Lisa Goodwin leading this effort, and we actually thought she was not going to be here tonight, and Pam was going to fill in, and she's got an update, but they have done an awesome job, and she's going to tell you what we've done so far. But I'm really pleased with the work that they've done on this project. But Deputy City Manager Pam Hodge?
So, good evening, Mayor and Council. I am filling in for Deputy City Manager Goodwin. She wasn't supposed to be here, but we'll go ahead and move forward with the presentation. Let me pull it up. We just wanted to give a quick update on where we are with the CARES Act. Again, the CARES Act was passed by Congress and signed into law on March 27th. It's over $2 trillion worth of economic relief for American people to cope with the public health and economic impacts of COVID-19. Again, our Phase One allocation was just over $10 million. This represents 30% of the total of the $34 million that will be allocated to the city of Columbus. We did receive the 30% advance, just over $3 million on August 3rd. The Phase One, which is the $10.2 million, must be expended and submitted by September 1st. So, we've been working under a very tight timeline to turn this around and get all of our paperwork submitted to the state for the $10 million. The 30% advance, just over $3 million that we had received, we had to submit and have that approved before they would release the balance. The invoices that we submitted was one IT teleworking invoice of 90 laptops at $89,000, and they have just recently allowed for public safety payroll, which was one of the easier things for us to collect and gather, to get into the portal. It's a pretty tedious process to upload all of the information to the portal. So, because we were on such a tight timeline, that is what we used for our initial Phase One funding, just under $3 million of public safety payroll, and that was frontline fire, EMS, and police. It was one of those expenditures that was allowed under the CARES Act. So, we did the biweekly payroll of March 27th, April 10th, and a portion of April 24th to meet that 30% advance. It did have to be submitted within $1 of the amount that was allocated. So, our Finance Director worked on that report so that we could submit, get approval for that $3 million, so that we could move on to submitting for the 70% balance, which is the $7,173,000. That was submitted on August 21st, and it's under review. We anticipate approval on that. And again, we utilized the public safety payroll for the balance of those pay periods on April 24th through a partial payroll on July 3rd. So, we have submitted everything related to Phase One, meeting that September 1st deadline, and so we're now just awaiting Phase Two and Phase Three. The balance of that will be approximately $24 million. The intention of that is to continue with the CCG expenses for teleworking expenses, PPEs, sanitation, office space retrofit, as well as the community grant application process. Those three areas is medical and health, community assistance, and the small business arts organizations. So, we have contracted with media, marketing, and more. That team is led by Marquette McKnight. She has hired and brought on subcontractors related to financial and grant experts to help her with this process. The professional fees of the contract is $309,000. Her focus was to gather and review all those applications, develop the website, communication, application review, and certification. She did send me an update. That deadline for those applications closed yesterday at 5:00. There is 472 applications that were submitted and that are being reviewed by her team. Those came from small businesses, office, retail, restaurants, professional practices, daycares, nonprofits, art organizations, churches providing community assistance, medical and health, hospital, clinics, and physician practices. So, we really did touch a wide variety of small businesses and organizations in our community to submit applications. They, the range of those applications, we don't have a total yet. Like I said, they just closed that application process, but the application ranged from a couple hundred dollars to well over a million. So, we'll be reviewing those applications once they submit those final lists to us to bring to council for consideration. They also, over this eight-day period, they offered nine public webinars, small group Zoom info sessions, speaking engagements to civic and community organizations. They provided a public tutorial... They provided a public tutorial on YouTube. So they did a lot of work in a very short period of time to try to get the word out to the community about the opportunity for grants related to the CARES Act. They will be turning over all of that material to us on September 8th. That was the deadline that we gave to them. And we are just waiting for Phase 2, Phase 3 guidance from the state on how those dollars will be allocated, and when that portal will be open for us to continue to submit invoices related to Phase 2 and Phase 3. So we have met our Phase 1 requirements, and just waiting for Phase 2 and Phase 3.
So, Mr. Mayor, we will answer any questions at this time, but you can see that there has been, they've done a lot of work in a very short period of time with 472 agencies, organizations, or nonprofits applying for a portion of the $34 million. And of course, we have $3 million in the bank that has been deposited, and we've already applied for the other $7 million that's available. And with the 472 organizations and with the additional city needs, we know that we will exceed the balance of $24 million. And for those cities or counties who are not able to spend their allocation, we hope it'll go back to the state and we'll help them spend it. But a lot of it, as you can see, with public safety payroll, we've taken advantage of that from last fiscal year, and now with the new middle, we'll be going after some of the public safety payroll for this fiscal year. We are taking care of our IT department and many of their needs to allow for teleworking, and we're doing some things to make our buildings safer, such as automatic doors and systems that will allow people to enter doors in various buildings without having to pull the door, push the door to enter the door. And that way, we reduce the amount of contact on doors because people leave germs on doors. So we're, I'm very pleased with where we are, and I hope that these weekly or updates every time we come to a council meeting, because we told you the last time, if we did not get it in at this council meeting, we would not be able to get back to council before September 1st. And so we were going to proceed, and then hopefully you will agree with our submittals. So we'll answer any questions that you have at this time.
Counselor House, did you have a question?
The 472 applications will be applied to the $24 million as we sort through that process between now and the end of December, from there about. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Deputy City Manager Hodge or the City Manager? Well, that's a great job. I mean, trying to put all that work into such a short period of time and under the city manager's leadership, just very good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and the last update we have is on the census, and I don't know how much of an update it is. It's just that if you haven't filled yours out, you need to get it filled out. If your neighbor hadn't filled theirs out, you need to get their, help tell them to fill it out. We've talked over and over again about how significantly critical it is. Aside from the competitive nature of the city manager, just wanted to make sure we're locked in, it is a number-two-sized city in Georgia, as we know we are, but we need the numbers to show it as well. There's always, but there's also so many programs, educational programs, economic development opportunities, so many things are driven by the census that we just, we cannot state it enough, that you need to do everything you can to not only get yours completed, but tell everybody you know to get theirs completed as well. We have a proclamation today that the Mayor Pro Tem is gonna read regarding the census. Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, Mayor. It's my privilege to publish the Census Day proclamation, which reads as follows. Whereas every 10 years, the U.S. Census Bureau counts residents across the country, and whereas the census is a population count taken of every, everyone residing in the United States, and the results of the nationwide survey have a real impact on how government operates, and whereas the numbers are used to determine the kinds of services to provide our community and how best to distribute billions of dollars in federal funding to state and local governments. Whereas the 2020 census will help create jobs that stimulate economic growth and increase employment, whereas the federal funding of our community's education system depends on census data and helps to decide federal funding of school lunches, teachers, special education, Head Start programs, and child health programs. And whereas the 2020 census is about the distribution of more than $675 billion in federal funds to states, cities, and counties, and is used to reapportion the House of Representatives, determining how many seats of Georgia we'll get. It is about redistricting the boundaries of congressional and state legislative districts and city council and school board districts. And whereas the Columbus Consolidated Government is committed to achieving a full, accurate census count by encouraging its employees, private businesses, nonprofit agencies, and local citizens alike to participate in the 2020 Census Day, to complete their census questionnaire so that Columbus, Georgia may have an accurate count of all its citizens. And whereas the main goal of establishing this day is to ensure that Columbus has an accurate count to provide the necessary services and government representation to the citizens we serve. Now therefore, Mayor Skip Henderson of Columbus, Georgia does hereby proclaim Friday, September 4th, 2020 as Census Day in Columbus, Georgia, and call on all Columbus Consolidated Government employees, private businesses, nonprofit agencies, and Fort Benning to come together and complete their census forms. He further calls and encourages leaders of local business, private businesses, nonprofit organization, agencies, and Fort Benning to join him, and call on all employees to complete their census on this day as declared. And he declares 2020 Census Day in Columbus, Georgia.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Johnson, you have some comments?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, Mayor, Council, City Manager. Aaron Torbert with Human Resources put together a little video yesterday that Mike's got ready, queued up to play real quick. I think it's about two minutes, and then after that, we'll let you know.
Hi, I'm Addie Britt, and I'm a transportation planner with the Columbus Consolidated Government, and I took my 2020 census, and I challenge you all to get counted.
Hi, my name is Carmen D. Hood. I'm a commercial appraiser for the Board of Assessors. I've completed my 2020 census. Have you? Everyone counts.
Hi, I'm Kevin Aker, and working for the Information Technology Department. I completed my 2020 census, and I challenge you to do the same because everyone counts.
Hi, I'm Mariah Jackson. I work for Human Resources, and I have completed my 2020 census. If you have not, now's the time for you to complete it. I challenge.
Hi, I'm Addie Britt, and I'm a transportation planner with the Columbus Consolidated Government, and I took my 2020 census, and I challenge you all to get counted.
Hi, my name is Carmen D. Hood. I'm a commercial appraiser for the Board of Assessors. I've completed my 2020 census. Have you? Everyone counts.
Hi, I'm Kevin Aker, and working for the Information Technology Department. I completed my 2020 census, and I challenge you to do the same because everyone counts.
Hi, I'm Mariah Jackson. I work for Human Resources, and I have completed my 2020 census. If you have not, now's the time for you to complete it. I challenge you. Everyone counts.
Hi, my name is Sherry Evans, and I'm with Human Resources of the Columbus Consolidated Government. I have completed my 2020 census. Have you? If not, I challenge you to do so. Everyone counts.
My name is Crystal Phillips, and I'm a residential appraiser with the Board of Assessors Office. I've completed my 2020 census. Have you? If you haven't, if you haven't, I challenge you to do so.
My name is Keisha Johnson of the Human Resources Department for the City of Columbus. I've completed my 2020 census, and I encourage you to go out and complete yours also.
Hi, my name is Tim Marshall. I'm a member of the Parks and Recreation Department, Columbus Consolidated Government, and I have completed my census, and I challenge all center directors to do the same. Be counted.
Hi, my name is Crystal Farley, and I work in the City Manager's Office, and I have completed my 2020 census.
Hi, my name is Lakeisha Jones. I mean, I work at Recorder's Court, and I have completed my 2020 census.
Senator Manning, Parks and Recreation, I've completed my 2020 census.
My name is Sophia White. I work in the Human Resources Department for the Columbus Consolidated Government, and I have completed my 2020 census. Have you done yours?
Hi, my name is Sylvessa Seldon. I work in the Parks and Recreation Department, and I have completed my 2020 census.
We have a couple of events coming up here soon that, with the assistance of the City Managers' Millennial Roundtable, they're gonna help us out. We've got the WIC Farmers Market that will be at the Health Department Saturday from 8:00 to 12:00, and then also on the 12th and 15th of September from 8:00 to 12:00, where we will have a census booth there. We are also participating in the epic voter registration drive that will be at the Citizen Service Center on Saturday from 10:00 to 6:00. And again, CMMR is assisting us there as well. They've been volunteering all day. And next week, while WIC vouchers are being picked up at the Health Department, we will have tents set up, September 1st, 2nd, 3rd, and 4th, offering folks to do the census on tablets or personal computers. And the idea is to get some of these folks who are in these hard-to-count areas and see if we can double up the effort that Gloria Strode and the census workers are doing.
Will, we appreciate it. Y'all have done a great job on trying to keep this momentum moving through the Planning Department, and we're grateful. It is, and it's just so significant that people get out there and try to make sure that they're covered. And the city manager is actually, I guess that's what he's gonna, I won't steal his thunder. Mr. City Manager?
Mayor, I was just going to thank Rick Jones and Will Johnson and the entire Planning Department for all of their efforts. And as you can see from the video from many of our employees, we wanted them to pass a message on to their peers, and that's why it's them challenging their peers. And so you'll see them going around the government, asking people, their peers, have you completed your census? I have. And so we are getting them fired up, that we are going to make sure that within our government, we're gonna do our part. And I know that you're challenging private sector businesses to do their part, so I'm really pleased with the work that they're doing. We are the second-largest city, and we're gonna maintain that status when this is all said and done.
And we have to mention, too, the private partnership. We've had a number of people out in the private sector step up and have put forth not only their time and their energy, but also their resources. And they have helped us really kind of start to move the needle. You know, it's one, this is one of those things that I know we're in a pandemic, and it seems to be sometimes we've got pandemicitis. There's reasons why things aren't happening. This is one thing that's gonna happen regardless of the pandemic, and we can't use that as an excuse. We've got to find a way to continue to advance the idea that folks need to sign up.
Yes, sir. Now, I'll add, piggyback on what you said. If folks will go on their Facebook page and follow Columbus Counts 2020, which is the private citizen-led effort, and Marquette McKnight is here tonight representing Columbus Counts 2020, and they are spending that money, they're doing their videos, they're at it hard. So we encourage folks to share what they post. We're sharing what they post on our department page and on other social media outlets. So we really couldn't do it without them. Also, I have Trey Wilkins here from the Planning Department. I almost forgot he was here. So he's, he's part of the team doing what we can.
Trey, Will, thank y'all for what you're doing. Thank you for your leadership, and we're gonna keep plugging away till the clock strikes midnight on the last day.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
That's it. Thank y'all.
Yes, sir.
The, Will, they've changed it twice. When, the last day that they're gonna be able to submit their information is when?
We have 30 days in September. It's the last day.
It's 30, September 31st.
Is the 30th the last day in September? Yes. It was gonna be Halloween, and the feds backed it up a month, which, yeah, can really help, but put your feet to the fire, though.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right. Counselor, is there, is there anybody here representing the family of Bishop Skinner? Counselor House, you wanna?
Eric, if Bishop Skinner's family would come forward? Just please come up to the podium. It's with great pleasure that I'll read this resolution into the record. Whereas Bishop L.D. Skinner, Sr. of the Bread of Life Christian Center passed away on Saturday, July 18th, 2020, at Piedmont Columbus Regional Hospital. Whereas Bishop Skinner was born in Elizabeth City, North Carolina, son of the late Richard and Alethea Bembry Skinner. Whereas Bishop Skinner graduated from the North Carolina College of Theology, earning a Bachelor of Arts in Biblical Studies, Master of Arts in Theology, and Doctorate in Biblical Studies. Whereas Bishop Skinner additionally earned a Doctorate of Divinity degree from Christ United Theological School and completed coursework at Columbus State University and Trenton State University. Whereas Bishop Skinner was a three-term Vice President of the Columbus Interdenominational Ministerial Alliance, former Vice President of the Columbus NAACP, former Chaplain and Counselor at the House of Mercy, former Volunteer Chaplain at Rutledge Correctional Institution, and former member of the Metro Columbus Clergy Association. Whereas he recently served as Board Chairman of the Greater Columbus Urban League, Board Member of the Columbus Salvation Army, Board Member of Tree of Life Health Clinic, and Member of the Joint College of African-American Pentecostal Bishops, Member of the NAACP, and Volunteer Life Recovery and Addiction Instructor at Valley Rescue. Whereas Bishop Skinner founded the Bread of Life Christian Center in 1984, was the presiding Bishop and Founder of Explosion Ministries Fellowship Association of Churches, a retired insurance executive with Prudential Financial, and a U.S. Army veteran of eight years having served in Vietnam. Whereas Bishop Skinner was the first recipient of the Reverend Albert McCorvey Religious Leadership Award from the NAACP, received the 2013 Board Member of the Year Circle of Excellence Award from the Urban League, 2011 Instructor of the Year Award from Valley Rescue Mission, and recipient of various service, leadership, and production awards from Prudential Financial. Whereas Bishop Skinner is the author of four life-impacting books, Overcoming Grasshopper Mentality, How to Whip Negative Thinking in 11 Easy Steps, Pray an Awesome Weapon, Encounters with God, and his latest book, Ordered Stops. Whereas Bishop Skinner is survived by his loving and devoted wife and co-minister, Lady Ruth McDaniel Skinner, three sons, Pastor L. Darnell Skinner, Jr., First Lady Arne Skinner, Darrell L. Skinner, Minister Latisha Skinner, Darius L. Skinner, and 11 grandchildren. Now therefore, the Council of Columbus, Georgia hereby resolves, we express our sincere condolences and deepest sympathy to the family of Bishop L.D. Skinner, Sr., founder of Bread of Life Christian Center. His legacy of pastoral care and activism in the Columbus community will long be remembered. Let of copy of the resolution be forwarded to the family of Bishop L.D. Skinner.
Counselor House, is that a motion?
That's a motion, Mr. Mayor.
Motion second to approve. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is passed. You have our deepest sympathy, and we're so grateful for the mark that Bishop Skinner has left on this community. Thank you so much. Can I say anything?
My mom said I'll speak for her. First of all, I want to say thank you to the mayor, to the city manager, to the council, and to Susan Cooper, who was very instrumental in making sure this happened, and also my dear friend Bob Portishev. And on behalf of the Skinner family and the Bread of Life Church, and my dear mother, we say thank you from the bottom of our heart.
Thank you.
We've got one more proclamation. We've got one more proclamation to present tonight. Is Susan Wood here? Susan is the Executive Director of House of Heroes, an organization that began here in Columbus, and was started by former Counselor Wayne Anthony. And Counselor Anthony actually came to visit a couple of weeks ago, and he and I talked about a number of things, and one of the things he recommended, and I'm not sure why we hadn't done it before, but was that we honor our public safety individuals in Columbus with a Public Safety Week recognition as close to September 11 as we could. So Susan is standing in his place today, and I'm going to read this into the record, Ms. Wood. It reads, whereas on September 11, 2001, four passenger jets were hijacked and crashed into the Twin Towers Pentagon in a field in Shanksville, Pennsylvania, killing nearly 3,000 innocent people. Whereas during the week of September 11, 2020, our nation and world will remember the lost lives and families of those who died that day. And whereas the police and firefighters bravely dashed into burning buildings to save the lives of those trapped inside, knowing they would face certain death. Three hundred forty-three firefighters died in the towering inferno, making it the most deadly day in firefighter history. Seventy-two police officers died in the deadly terror attack, making it the deadliest day in law enforcement history. And whereas of the 2,977 people who died that day, over 412 were public safety personnel. 2.86 million people serve in public safety, meaning one person, 1% of our population, protects 99% of the 340 million Americans, plus visitors, students, and workers that come to America. And whereas there are nearly 60,000 assaults on police officers per year resulting in over 18,000 injuries, and on average, 163 officers per year killed in the line of duty. And whereas the most dangerous position in public safety is one of the 1,134,000 firefighters in America who respond to over 34 million calls per year. And whereas on average, over 100,000 firefighters are injured each year, and over 100 die in the line of duty, firefighters, EMS, and police have become our city and nation's first responders responding to over 25 million 911 emergency calls. And whereas the Columbus Fire and EMS has served Columbus for 180 years and has obtained the ISO Class 1 rating, making it one of the top 1% in the nation. And whereas the people of Columbus, Georgia set aside time to recognize, honor, and applaud the 700 men and women of public safety who risked their lives every day and every night to protect us and keep us safe. And whereas public safety encompasses police, fire, EMS, sheriff, marshal, and animal control who respond to over 25,000 calls per year while achieving the highest accreditation by multiple law enforcement and public safety agencies. Now therefore, I Skip Henderson, Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, does hereby proclaim the week of September 6 through 12, 2020, as Public Safety Week.
Thank you so much. As everyone knows, the House of Heroes honors our military veterans, but what they don't know is we also honor public safety, and we've been doing that for 20 years. So thank you so much for this proclamation, we appreciate it, and we love our city.
Thank you, and thank you for what you do in serving the veterans and the first responders here in our community. All right, we will now move on to the city attorney's agenda. Which city attorney?
All right, thank you, Mayor. One more official welcome to Counselor Tucker, who I can barely see over there, but welcome to the council table. We have a fairly short business agenda, Mayor. First item up for a vote is a zoning action. It's 5377 Veterans Parkway going for a veterinary clinic general commercial is ready for adoption.
Motion approved by Counselor Woodson, a second by Mayor Protem. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Anybody opposed? Passes.
All right, next item to vote on is a neighbor work zoning petition at 530 Walnut Street. It's ready for approval.
Motion and a second approved, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Anyone opposed? It passes.
All right. The next item is the ordinance providing for the demolition of five different structures, and I understand there may be somebody here present on some of these items. I will call out the addresses again. If anybody is here, present, please raise your hand. 1420 26th Street, 2327 Herd Street, 3314 Urban Avenue, 2810 Peabody Avenue, or 6526 Dorsey Drive. Okay, we've got somebody here, Mayor.
This is second reading, but if the council wishes, they can make a motion that the gentleman be heard. Motion and a second? Any, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, sir, you can come to the podium. If you would, state your name and your address, please. For the record.
My name is Curtis Lark, I'm the owner. My address is 6326 Brown and Drive. I'm the owner of 6526 Dorsey. As of today, I've talked to, with the first reading, first of all, let me apologize, first reading, I had a VA appointment, so I'd called the Inspection and Code Section and talked to Ms. Davis, and she informed me that she would put the notes in the record, that I did inform her why I wasn't here. However, by the time I got down here from the appointment, you guys were finished. However, I bought this property, it was already in demolition status, and my intent for the property is to restore the building. That's my neighborhood. I've talked to the Assistant Director, Mr. Cobb, and it was just misunderstanding because he told me as long as we was doing something to the property, I would be okay. However, in the process, I bought this property last year in October, I think. In the process of cleaning it out, I had several thefts, they stole my tractor, stole my trailer. However, you know, it kind of put me in a bad mindset, so COVID came along, so all that really doesn't matter. But as of today, I've talked to, I have my financial statement, I have the monies to do the property. I have, in the process now, as of today, Mr. Wade, General Contractor, is going to get my permit to turn my lights on, on the pole, temporary pole, as soon as they finish with my blueprint. So I'm here today, and I talked to the Inspection Department yesterday to Ms. Charlotte Davis, and she informed me that with everything that I have, it shouldn't be a problem for me to get an extension. And I went down and asked for a six-month extension to get this property up to standards.
So you're requesting six additional months?
Yes, sir.
Mayor, the ordinance provides that the council may grant an extension up to 120 days, which is about four months.
Counselor Crabb?
I make the motion that we extend it for four months, and that they need to have the permit pulled within seven days.
Okay, there's a motion second. And I know in the past, we've been kind of reticent to give extensions, or nothing personal, it's just that we recognize that typically these processes take a long time to get to this point, and, and the neighbors, or the people who live in that area, and that is your neighborhood, you mentioned, and I know you understand this, we've always been very careful about trying to make sure we remember that those individuals would have to be, would have to continue dealing with the property. And we've seen, if you've got, do you have a signed contract with Mr. Wade?
I don't have it signed. He's going to sign it once we finish with the blueprint. We're in the process of getting the blueprint as of today, sir.
Okay, there's a, there's a motion and a second, and to the motion, Counselor Huff?
Question, are there any parameters as far as the four-month period if he is on schedule, working on it from now to four months, and he just needs two additional months to finish up? There's been steady work going along, is there any way to give him a two additional months?
Well, I think there's a little bit of discretion with the city manager and the building official, Mr. Pruitt, that has been exercised over the years, but, you know, officially, the ordinance says 120 days, so in your motion, that's what you ought to limit it to.
Quick question to the person at the mic. What's your name?
Curtis Lark.
Walker?
Lark, Curtis Lark, L-A-R-K, Lark.
Okay.
Curtis Lark.
Okay. Working within the 120 days, that four months, what does it look like from your perspective?
From my perspective, as soon as I get the contract signed with Mr. Wade, I'm going to work. I have laid on my, with the reach reckoned, I told him to stand by, he's supposed to have been delivering today, but I had to come down here. So what it was, it's actually just a misunderstanding, when I went down to the Code Inspection and Codes Office, because I just misunderstand, I'm not giving no fault to nobody, it's my property, it's my responsibility. If I get the six months, I will get the property fixed and have it up to standards.
What, what can you get done in the four months, is that's what I'm asking?
Well, I don't know, weather permitting, I'm going to get much as I can get done. It will be closed in.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a burnout, so the roof is all, it's partially burned, so I have to tear the whole roof off. I will get that roof on, I will get it closed in, windows in, the roof on, facing south it, I will have that by, for sure, in a four-month period.
Okay, because normally, I think you will only get leniency from the council if you have shown
Progress.
Work over four months, and that you're close to finishing.
Yes, sir.
Because the understanding is, if you're not finished in four months, they can still demo the property.
Yes, that's what I was told at Inspection and Codes Division, if I show some improvement, and the main thing is just get it closed in before, so that the neighbors won't be complaining about it being a nuisance. If I can get that, and I'm pretty sure, I'm sure that I can have that done within that 120 days.
Okay, within, within the 120 days, that we really need you to get that contract done, get it back to city manager's officer, wherever it goes?
Well.
And, and constant work over that 120 days to show that you are close to finishing, or you need additional time? That's, I think that's the only way that the council may, may consider
Yes.
Additional time, that you, you're moving along at a steady rate, and you just need a few more days.
Yes, and I will do that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Counselor Woodson?
Yes, I want to just make sure that the gentleman understands that when we give an extension, as we're doing the four-month extension, if you do not meet that percentage with the roofing and the windows, there's a tendency that will say, that's demolition, the building, you lose that money, too.
Yes, ma'am.
So I want you to make sure that this is exactly what you want, because it's going to depend on you to meet the criteria of the code enforcement, because if you don't, it's going to be wasted money, because we'll tear it down.
Exactly.
We have to be very specific, because the neighbors have been dealing with this for a long time. We've been fighting for so long to clean areas that need it, so we can't keep giving a break, a break, a break, a break, and people don't do anything. So I just want to be very clear with you that in those four months, you stated in here, that you will have the roof and the windows put in and secure the building. So that's what's expected of you. And in that process, just as Counselor Huff said, that means your contract, that means everything. I know you can put a roof in in two days, and I know you can put in the windows in three days, but your problem is going to be the paperwork, and hopefully not the financial. But I want you to be very clear, that if you get this extension and you don't meet those criteria, you lost your money and the building's coming down.
Yes, ma'am, I understand. And it's not the financial, right now, it's just the paperwork. And as soon as Mr. Wade told me today, as soon as, he told me about three to five days for the architect to finish the blueprint. As soon as he get the blueprint, he can come down, we can get the permit, and I can go to work.
Counselor Davis?
Thank you, Mayor. I just, it's been a while since we've had somebody come and petition. Usually, nobody shows up in these matters, and I think the way we've done this before is that, before, you know, I'm a little reluctant to grant conditions without some kind of understanding, and, and people need to understand, I mean, this has gone, it's gone through a process, and I imagine the process is probably close to two years now.
I don't.
Is that accurate?
I don't.
It's close to two years now that we got to this point, and, you know, the council has always stated that, and made sure that that's an understanding. I think with any conditions that we've done in the past, and I'm going to remain consistent, because you're probably not going to be the last person that comes in here and requests for leniency. And I'm not saying that I don't believe you, and that you're going to follow through with your word and do the work, that's not what I'm saying. But what I'm saying is that whatever we grant you, we're going to have to grant everybody else that comes in here and asks for the same thing, and it's all going to be different. So I think the way we've handled this as a council, and I couldn't, I can't do a conditional, just a conditional 120 days, without really understanding that there's got to be, there's got to be some timelines, there's got to be some responsibility in meeting dates on the timeline. And I believe, Mr. City Attorney, what we've done in the past, Mayor, what we've done in the past, is that we've allowed the city manager to have discretion, to look through that, to make sure that the, that the steps are being taken, that we're just not being told tonight that something's going to happen, but there's actually action happening. And the city manager, I believe, has always taken the discretion in that, and if he sees that, that the party is not responsibility, responsible in following through, then he's going to inform council, and the decision's going to be to move forward and demolish the property.
I understand.
And that's how we've done it. And I can't just pass a window here without having those conditions in place, and having that understanding, because there's got to be some accountability. It's taken two years, almost, with a process to get here, to get to this point. And I think that's the right thing to do, that's the only way that I could support a request to develop and finish the property, because I know somebody else is coming right behind you, and I'm going to have to, I'm going to have to be fair. And just thinking about this, and this is the first one that we've had petition in a long time, I'm pretty, I think I'm pretty accurate that we've always asked the city manager to use his discretion, along with our inspections departments, to make sure that things are being done in a timely manner. If I'm wrong, somebody correct me.
I think in the past, there have been instances where the Code Inspection, the head of that department, would set some benchmarks together with the petitioner, and then if they missed them, they missed them. But, but I don't know that, I know the city manager's used administrative flexibility when it came to somebody that wanted to demolish it themselves, it would stay on the list, but then they would withhold the demolition as long as they could, if they needed to demolish it. That's the way I remember it. But it's, it's, it's up to council.
Well, I would like to say that I cannot afford for it to be torn down, because I have too much lost in it already, so I have to fix the house. And that's what I plan to do, and that's what I'm, if I get the time, that's what I'm going to do. And it'll be useless to me to start on it and don't meet the timelines, and if I have a problem, I'll tell you, but... a problem, I'll tell you, but to take the rest of the roof off, do the framing, and to put the trusses in and a top on that roof, and to close it in and put windows in, I can have that done in 120 days. Not a problem.
And I think, and that's, I think that's good, because in the past, where we run into situations, or is, and I know you're not, but we've seen people, all of us have, where we've, they've been given some time, and then they can't quite meet that timeline, and they've put money into it, and then the house gets torn down.
Oh, no.
And they ended up losing more money.
Yeah.
And that's what we don't want to see happen to you.
That's what I don't want to happen.
So.
That's why I'm here, sir.
Counselor Crabbe?
Thank you. Can we hear from Ryan Pruitt on this situation? Because it sounds as though maybe this started prior to Mr. Lark's ownership, and so I'd kinda like to hear your timeline.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, Mayor and Council. The case at 6526 Dorsey Drive started in 2018. Our records and the tax records show that Mr. Lark purchased the property in August of 2019. As soon as we were notified of the new ownership, we sent out a demolition notice hearing to Mr. Lark's address. No, there was no representation at the hearing, so that time, we sent out the demo letter that gives him 45 days to either demo or repair the property. This was back in the fall of 2019, and then there has been no action to date, and then we brought it forward to you guys last week.
Okay, will you, if we were to pass this and give him an extension, would you and your department follow through, kind of like you do with new construction? You would set timelines for him, and you guys would come out and inspect it, and if he doesn't hit one of those inspections, then we would revert back?
Well, we don't set timelines for construction, we just inspect the work when it's ready to be inspected. So the homeowner or contractor calls for the inspection, and then we go out and review the work and approve it. You know, in cases like this, I know in the past, talking with staff, you know, how it's been handled is, that we would work with the homeowner, you know, if he comes in and gets a permit in the next week, and, you know, we're out there making inspections, you know, we would work with them, you know, within the confines of the ordinance, you know, to help facilitate him repairing the structure. You know, it's a win-win for us if the property only, you know, takes care of the nuisance.
One of my concerns is I know that getting building materials can be hard right now. There's a delay, you have to order them, they don't, they're not holding them in stock right now, and so that may, you're gonna have to stay right on top of it, Mr. Lark, because you're gonna have to order ahead, and you're going to have to really have a good timeline, or you're gonna fall behind.
Yes, I've talked to, for the trusses, I went to Valley Trust Company today, and they told me they are one month behind. And I didn't make my order, I have it, I just told them to stand by until I come see y'all. So now, if I get the approval, I can order it, but it is 30 days out, all orders that they have, I was told that today. And I have the estimate with me on how much it costs to get my truss. Now, I know that OSB, it's been fluctuating on the price, I don't know what's the timeline on that, but that Home Depot and Lowe's, they do have it. How long they will have it, once I get what I need, I don't know.
Are you maintaining the yard?
Yes, ma'am.
So it's mowed and everything's looking good?
Yes, ma'am.
In the yard, it's just the house?
Just the house.
Is this a brick structure?
Brick structure.
So it's just the windows and just the roof?
Just the windows and the roof.
Windows have to be ordered ahead of time, too.
Yes, ma'am.
They're, because I know, I've tried to replace some windows in some of the properties that I am trying to sell or manage, and they're at least three weeks out.
Well, I didn't know that.
So you need to anticipate that.
Yes, what I was gonna do, I was just gonna have Window World come in and put my windows in, so I would.
They might be, they might be
Yeah, I'll check it out.
Month or two out, too, so
Yes, ma'am.
I don't want you to, you know, I made this motion, I don't want you to let me down.
Ma'am, I don't want to let nobody down, because I'll be losing myself.
Right.
But anyway, the property was, like he was saying, the property was in a demolition status when I purchased it, and so I got it in August, and like I was explaining that, the cost of theft, that really just slowed me down, because I had a 2016 Kubota front-end load store and my trailer from that location. So all that doesn't matter, but I'm just saying, that's my story. But if I get my extension for 120 days, and if I have a problem with any orders, as far as my trusses or the wood materials to do the job, I will instantly get with my contractor, and we will go down to that. I think I got a pretty good relationship with the guys down there, codes and inspection, because I've been down there for about the last three weeks, and they know me by name now. I hadn't met Mr. Pruitt, but when I first started this process, I talked to Mr. Cobb, and it was just misunderstanding on how he had told me. He told me, as long as we making some progress, you know, so misunderstanding, there's water on the bridge, I'm ready to move forward.
I respect what Counselor Davis said, and I know that this may be setting a precedent, but based on the fact that we are going through COVID-19, I think that this is, this might be a little bit out of the norm. The fact that they started the demolition process prior to his purchase, I think that's a little bit out of the norm. I think there's enough things that are unique about this particular project that, no disrespect to codes and inspection at all, I respect everything that you guys do. I'm just thinking that this may be a little bit out of the norm, and that we should probably give him the opportunity to pull through.
Okay. Mr. City Manager, did you have something?
Well, Mr. Mayor, let me just say first, when the new owner acquires the property, even though we had started, we start the demolition process, if it comes into a new owner, we start the process over. So it wasn't that time, it already elapsed. When he purchased the property that he couldn't get back, the process started over with him. And so he went through our normal and usual process. And let me just say that, you know, if you give him 120 days, yeah, I think I heard you say get the building, the permit in seven days. Based on what I heard him say, I don't know that he'll be able to get a permit in seven days.
I don't, I don't know as soon as.
So you said your architect?
Yes.
You waited on him to get something from the architect?
The blueprint.
And then he's got a, you know, and so that's probably not going to happen in seven days. So if you put that in there, then he's, that's gonna be the first failure. But let me just say that if you, if you give him 120 days, it's gonna take communication on his part, and it's gonna take documentation. He's gonna have to show that, you know, he ordered the trusses, and they are 30 or 45 days out, and that's why he's losing time. He's gonna show, have to show that he ordered the windows, and the windows are 60 days out. Otherwise, you know, because some people will wait, and you give them 120 days, and they wait until 100 days expired, and then they go running trying to get it done. We just need communication, we need to know that you're working, we need to know that it's not your fault that you can't get the trusses, and you can't get the windows or the doors or whatever you're trying to get. And so with communications and documentation that you've ordered these things, and you're waiting on delivery, then that makes a difference.
Okay.
And so if he gets 120 days, as long as we communicate, and he shows documentation, and he shows that he's out there working, and, you know, he'll be fine. But you gotta be able to show that.
Yes, sir.
Counselor Davis?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to add to the motion, or you?
It's, Mike is not.
Oh, I turned you off, hit your light again, I'm sorry. There we go.
Mayor, I'd like to add to the motion, or either make a subsequent motion, but that we give the gentleman 120 days with the city manager's discretion, that he is doing, meeting the timelines and his obligation or accountability, and that we get a report on it, and that we're getting the reports, or the city manager will report to us that we're making progress. If not, we can make a decision then, but I would suspect, it's probably true, I'm not sure if he can get it done in 120 days, but if he's making progress, if the gentleman's making progress and the city manager's watching it, and our folks are watching it, then we can always extend it another 20 days so he can finish it. And that would be what I would recommend, I think that's fair, and I think that's consistent with what we've done in the past, and it wouldn't be opening the door up to, setting a new president, of which we've always been consistent in the past.
All right, that would be in the form of amending the motion, I guess? And I had heard a second from Counselor Tucker. So Counselor Thomas and Crabbe, is that to this particular motion to amend? Okay. Is yours, Counselor Thomas? Counselor Thomas?
I'd like to hear from Mr. Pruitt, if you have a recommendation. You've heard the discussion tonight, you know our concerns, you know the solution that we, has been, has been put forth. Would you give us your recommendation?
My recommendation would be, you know, we have a list of five properties right now, so it would be approximately 30 to 45 days before this project could be scheduled for demolition. So my recommendation would be, you know, if there is gonna be an extension of time, that it would be more in that timeframe to show, within that timeframe, that he's got permits, he's got a signed contract, you know, that he has the financial capabilities to do the work, those types of things in that kind of shorter timeframe.
Mr. Pruitt, I seem to remember, and please correct me if I'm wrong, we have in the past made the recommendation that this, this particular project, whatever that project is, be placed at the bottom of the list for demolition, and has given the property owner the, some time that they need to do some of the kinds of things Counselor Davis is talking about, and Counselor Crabbe. I don't know if we need to do that officially, or just to have Mr. Pruitt and the inspections and codes. You know our concern, you've heard our trouble with this, and, you know, I'd like to give, excuse me, give Mr. Lark the benefit of the doubt, to give him as much leeway as we can, but to still keep us on track and to keep things moving. And the city manager and the inspections and codes department, I think, do that on a regular basis, so, and, you know, we've, we've heard the financial piece of this or whatever. Would you be comfortable if, with that, Mr. Pruitt?
Yes, ma'am. As I said before, it's really a win-win for us to have the property owner take care of the problem, you know, it saves us taxpayer money, and we can go focus on it.
It's a lot cheaper for us, right?
Correct, yeah. And so it's really ideal for us to work with the owner and help facilitate them doing the work instead of us.
Thank you, sir.
So just so that I can clarify, just so that I understand, what we're saying is leave it on the list, on the demolition list, approve the demolition list as it stands, and move his to the bottom, which gives him about 30 days. So during that 30 days, Mr. Pruitt, what documentation are you gonna need to see? Because that would have to be, I think that would have to be understood upfront. I think you said some kind of letter from a financial institution, the signed contract, the pulled permit, but my question then is what happens after that 30 days? Does it have to come, are you, can you administratively just delay that until council has an opportunity to reconsider and pull that one off?
Mr. Mayor, if you do the 120 days, you know, we'll handle everything else administratively, and we'll make sure that Mr. Lark is doing what he's supposed to do.
Okay, and that's the motion on the table right now, but I, I mean, we have done what Counselor Thomas has mentioned before, but typically, I think that's for a shorter window when they, when they need to get something done. So right now, the motion, well, we've got one more individual. Counselor Crabbe, to the motion to amend?
So are you saying?
The city manager will make sure, he doesn't. Make sure he gets his record in.
Um, I would like to amend my motion to pull out the seven-days permit needs to be pulled, and implement that the city manager and codes inspections will monitor the progress, but keep the 120 days as per city manager.
Okay, and that amendment's already been made, that's what we're speaking on, so the only thing you're gonna add is amend it again and pull the, I think you can just, since you authored that motion, you can just pull that seven days.
Seven days, yes.
Am I correct, the city attorney?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion now is that Mr. Lark is given 120 days. During that time, the city manager will work administratively through the codes inspection to make sure that they understand that progress is actually being made. And if it stops, Mr. Lark's on notice, and the administration will, administrative folks will move it forward, bring it back. Counselor Davis, do you have something?
Yes, to the motion, I just want to let all the counselors know that that's usually, that's what happens, the city manager will make sure that he's got all his documentation in place. We've always made the, I guess, a petitioner in this case, that we've always let it be known to the petitioner that you need to do, you need to get your work in in a timely manner, you need to get that, those documents to the city manager and to the codes inspection. That shows that you're honestly and you're actively making progress, but we've also said, if we get a recommendation from the city manager, and he comes back and there's no progress, the house will most likely come down.
All right, there's a motion on the floor for 120-day extension with oversight by the city manager's office. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, Mr. Lark, you've got 120 days, and congratulations, that's the first time that I've seen in a very long time that we've given, given an extension.
Well, I'd like to thank everybody for your participation in agreeing to give me the extension.
Yes, sir, good luck. Counselor Woodson?
We put the faith in you, so when you leave here, you start making phone calls, and you place those orders for the chisel and the windows, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Don't waste no time, tomorrow morning, go see code enforcement, give them whatever you have.
Yes, ma'am.
The clock starts ticking.
Yes, ma'am.
Make us proud, okay?
Yeah, well, I was down there yesterday, I just didn't go today. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lark. Thank you, Counselor.
Okay, Mayor, with those administrative notes having been made by the clerk, we need a vote on the entire ordinance to demolish these structures.
Motion by Counselor Woodson to approve, motion by, second by the mayor pro temp. Any discussion on the remaining properties? Okay, all in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed? All right, that's approved.
All right. The next item, Mayor, is the parking enforcement district. This would be a new district in the downtown historic area to be administered by Department of Transportation Metra. Is Ms. Gillyard here, or? I didn't know, city manager, do you want to comment on this?
Counselor Thomas?
Mr. City Attorney, I would like to, I received a phone call from the president of the historic district. of the historic district several months ago. And her concern and the district's concern at that time were the number of times that people were illegally parked or they were parked, whatever. And under the conditions that we are under right now, the Uptown Transportation District stops at Ninth Street and the historic district is not included in that. So if there's an illegally parked vehicle, for example, they have to deal with the Columbus Police Department. And the police department has to send somebody out and all of those kinds of things. And the conversation that I had with the president of the organization was, we currently have the Metra folks enforcing traffic responsibilities in Uptown. And so what they are asking us to consider is to move that district further, whatever way that is, south, to the river so that the Metro District would be able to handle that part of the historic district and not have to have the Columbus Police Department come. That's the very simple explanation of what we were doing. Counselor Woodson and I have talked and we think that this will help not only those people who live in the district, but other people to know what they should be doing and how that transportation, those parking issues and some of those kinds of things need to be taken care of. So I would hope that you will give this your consideration as we come back next time to respond. And I see there's some folks here who probably want to say something.
And Mayor, one more comment on this. There is a special provision in this ordinance that says parking restrictions will be enforced in accordance with posted signage. The Columbus Police Department will enforce parking violations in posted time zones and those that involve parking on the grass, so.
And they currently have the authority to do that. So this is not changing that authority, just restating it.
That's right. That will continue.
Mr. City Manager, do you have some comments?
Staff, they're here only if there are questions, Mayor. I think Counselor Thomas explained it.
Very good.
Okay. Any other questions?
All right. Any other questions or comments? Doesn't appear to be any.
All right. If there's no objection on that, we'll leave it on the table for two weeks, Mayor, and vote at that time. Next item is the ordinance that would place into effect the same conditions in the mayor's emergency order regarding wearing of masks in Columbus, Georgia. There are provisions in here that provide exceptions such as personal vehicles, residential property, being outside, socially distanced, children under 10 years of age.
Counselor Allen?
Mayor pro temp, Allen. I apologize. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Just to follow up on what City Attorney said, just we all heard that Governor Kemp on August 15th allowed some guidelines to be issued in his order that gave cities and counties the ability to enforce or put in place a mask mandate. And unfortunately, that's where we are now. So we're in the best interest of the citizens for the public health. This is where we are. And we offer this ordinance for your consideration and I'd be glad to answer any questions going forward. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. There's a motion to approve. And by the way, this can be approved, I think.
Yes, we're in the period of public health emergency, so this can be voted on today and effective.
Counselor Davis?
On adoption.
Yeah. I mean, I have a couple of questions. And certainly, I think we all have, we all understand the reasoning behind it and certainly the goal and what we're trying to accomplish. I do question the need for an ordinance. I think we've already given the privilege to the mayor through executive order to make these decisions and the decision's already been made. So it should be practiced and upheld. I question the standpoint from an ordinance because I think that, you know, going back and taking an ordinance off the books kind of, I don't know, it's somewhat redundant with both of them. I do question that, but like I said, I understand the goal. I, it's interesting, I was thinking about this today and an article came out. I think everybody knows what my favorite drink is. But the story was about a Starbucks in Korea where there happened to be one lady that tested positive or had COVID-19 that was in the store. And she happened to be buying air vent that evidently over in Asia, they're a little different than ours, but it was on the floor and it was blowing. Well, the story keeps going that, they traced it back to that one store and the one lady, the 56 people were infected by it in that Starbucks at the same time. So the story also, in addition to it, was that the Starbucks employees all had masks, not only masks, but they had face shields on as well. None of them contracted the virus, but everybody else in the store did. So, you know, I guess that's the moral of the story, but I think we've come to know that I don't know if a mask is 100% going to keep us safe. But what they stated in the article, it's really the only effective means that we have to try to contain the virus if you're not social distancing and using common sense. I try to do that and I try to be respectful of others at the same time. I do, I've received some calls, some concerns. Everybody takes a different, seems like there's different positions on this. But Mayor, you might want to clarify from a standpoint of sporting activities. I've heard a lot of folks say, I think this ordinance says something about exempting 10 and under, but you've got a lot of athletic events that are happening out there where it's really, I won't say it's suspect of wearing a mask, but it's extremely difficult to wear a mask and to keep it on your face, such as soccer and some other events, maybe running. Some people have brought to my attention that it could be a health issue for people getting involved in heavy, I guess, really strict-type exercise where your body is being used at a, at a much higher pace and it needs oxygen and some of those things. Could you cause other problems through that? These are some of the questions that has come up. And then I think there's been some related to church, going to church and some places like that where, what is the definition of social distancing and does it apply to them and how should they talk to their members of their church? So I, you know, before, I think we need to state what the goal is, but two, we need to have a understanding of what exactly we're talking about here and how we're going to address some of those issues.
Well, with regards to churches, it's pretty simple. If you're indoors in that particular facility, whether it's a church or it's a retail center or any other entity, if they do not post that they are not, they do not want to enforce masks, then you wear a mask if you're indoors. Now, churches have an opportunity, if they are, and a lot of churches, several have done a good job of the setting where people can sit. And if they opt out and just put a sign out there, they are not enforcing the mask ordinance, then when people walk in, they can sit in socially distance and they're fine. It's no different than a bakery that says, I don't want to enforce it. People can come in without a mask or mask optional. With regards to organized sports, that is being worked out with those individual leagues, with our Parks and Recreation Department. We have been working with them now for the past three or four months. So we're in the process of getting that, getting that worked out. They're providing us with protocol that we have asked for and our Parks and Recreation Department has made it very clear to the leagues that as long as those protocols are followed, everything will operate smoothly. But if they do not follow the protocol that they've agreed to, we will not hesitate to interrupt the season where it is at the point they are unable to follow that protocol.
Well, I don't, are you, are you telling me as we go, we're going to modify this ordinance?
No. No. What the ordinance says is what we just, we just mentioned.
Well, help me, walk me through 10 and under are exempt.
Yes.
So if you've got ages 10 and under playing soccer, and they're all on the field playing, they're fine. They don't need masks. But if you've got 11 to 16-year-olds, you're saying they have to wear masks while they play?
No, that's not correct. If the leagues have submitted the protocols to our Parks and Recreation Department, they are acceptable. They are, and we, and I gotta, I have to lift up our deputy city manager, Goodwin, and Holly Browder. They've done an awesome job of not only communicating with our folks here in town, but they also have done a good job of looking at what other communities are doing and making sure that there's some standards through the Recreation Department organization.
Mr. Mayor, would you give the, while we're having this conversation, if we're going to make a decision on this tonight, would you give the citizens a better understanding of, an assurance that this is not a measure to cause controversy, but that the city's taking every means? I think I read somewhere that there's going to be, if there's an offense, there may be a warning. I think that you've stated that there even masks will be handed out in certain situations, but...
Yeah. This is, this is not, this is not an issue. I mean, the enforcement, it will take place exactly as you've just described. It's going to be more of an educational process. The law enforcement officers, if there is a situation where they need to approach somebody who's not wearing a mask in an area that a mask would be required to be worn, they will advise them of the ordinance, educate them on what their responsibilities are and give them a mask. We've talked with the city manager's office. We've got masks coming in that will allow us to be able to stock our law enforcement officers with a good supply. And then they'll, they'll approach it from that perspective.
Well, I appreciate that response. The, you know, again, I do question the matter of having an ordinance because that is a law. And I just, you know, just trying to think through this, people need to understand, there's going to be some situations that occur. There's going to be some cases where, let's just say if this is an ordinance, there's going to be some violations. I guess it's safe to tell people, or the accurate thing or the truth to say here is that if you call 911, there's a good chance you may not get an officer. There's a good chance that somebody's not going to come to a call like that. There's a good chance that it's not going to be addressed. So hopefully, I would hope that people would just do the right thing and to keep from getting involved in a, in a situation of controversy. But that could be a reality. I just, that needs to be stated, that that could be a reality out in the community. But the goal here, I think that in my short conversations with you, is to try to just to take it a step higher, one notch higher, and just say, look, we need to really work together on this to try to mean business and try to make an impact in some of these numbers and these cases. I would suspect, I guess, when this is, gets to a point, are you going to give an executive order to remove it? Or is the council just going to have to take the ordinance off the books? Or both?
I defer to the city attorney. We'll take whatever action's necessary to do away with the mask ordinance.
Yeah. It could be both. If there was, the mayor could issue an executive order rescinding his order and at the very next council meeting, you can repeal the ordinance.
And I'll tell you, the only reason this has come into councils and ordinance is because of our commitment to communicate with council and to try to make sure that y'all know what we're doing and that you ratify the things that we do. I'm completely comfortable with having it as an executive order. But I do think it sends a stronger message, one of unity from the council, if it's voted on by council. But if this, if this group decides that they would rather it just remain an executive order, I'm okay with that. Is that all, sir?
Thank you, Mayor.
Counselor Thomas?
Mr. Mayor, I had someone call me the other day after they read some of this in the media. And his question was, he has a medical condition that prevents him from wearing a mask. And it's a lung issue. And he said to me, under HIPAA, I don't have to discuss with you what my medical condition is. It's private. So how will that be handled by our public safety people as if they see someone without a mask? And I tried to assure him that I didn't think that we're going to be overbearing with this, but that we are looking to make sure that people are following the protocol as much as they can. Is that, was that a correct answer?
I think that's spot on.
And I don't know if there are other situations that the person doesn't have to wear a mask. But this was a, particularly was a medical condition and he didn't want to have to carry around a letter from his doctor telling you something that you don't have any business knowing.
I understand. And I think you've described it very well. I think that conversation will happen. All right. There was a motion from Counselor Woodson, a second from Counselor Tucker. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Are you opposed? All right. Motion was to approve. All right. And it was the second to that motion. And I didn't hear any discussion. So all those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Any opposed? All right. So those in favor, raise your right hand. He, Counselor House voted in the affirmative.
No.
All right. So that passes.
All right. Pass nine to one. Mayor, that is the last item that we have this evening that closes out our business agenda.
All right. We'll move to the public agenda. And I'll remind those that speak, we have, we'll put you on for five minutes. And I apologize, but the only timer we've got, I think right now, is my cell phone. So I will give you a signal when you've got one minute left. And you'll need to begin by just stating your name and your address. So first on the public agenda is Mr. Timothy Veals regarding rundown houses. Welcome, Mr. Veals.
Timothy Veals, 1039 Brooks Road. What my concern is, is a rundown house in the river around the communal neighborhood. I know they're doing a new roundabout, looks good. They got the new screw called the street. But when you look out, you look like a huffing. And I tell them, I would create that the city be more strict on, on about cleaning up around their property. Bet you a little pickup, you know, bet you my neighborhood got Watson's Cabin in Brooks, got Ben and Drive, Fort Ben and Road. I tell them, it just look awful around the neighborhood, a little pickup. So people just put us outside the house, you know, track in, be out there. If you like the track man running day, you'll be out there all night week. You know, to me, they need to be more strict on, on the little pickup. Because to me, it getting worse, it ain't getting no better. And that's a beautiful neighborhood over there once it cleaned up. So for as a roundabout, I'm hoping y'all put a camera out there. Because, man, they fly around there. But other than that, that my basic concern is a whole lot of litter in our neighborhood, in that community right there. I would, you know, I would like for more officers to ride through there more often, but I know... but I know we got a lot going on. So I would create that, uh, for, because you wrote, Fort Ben, it's a lot of litter should not be like that. And a lot of rundown houses. It's, uh, a guy called on a guy on, uh, 917, Brooks Road. Cut a yard, put a grave ready at the side of the road, ain't no bagging that. I tell them, to me, the city need to be a little more strict on, on, on the litter around the house.
Mr. Veals, thank you. A matter of fact, the city attorney, uh, city manager has launched a, or will in September launch a problem that hopefully will help a little bit with some of that, those issues. He'll have a special team patrolling who are required to call in a certain number of, um, issues each, each hour. And their job is to ride around a sea areas like that so that you don't have to come down here and tell us about it, so that we can get folks out there to clean it up. I hope you see a difference. And if you don't, I hope you'll come back and let us know.
I hope we are.
Thank you, sir. All right, next is Ms. Teresa Alamein, representing the Southern Anti-Racism Network, regarding inmate labor and the budget. Ms. Alamein, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council.
Good evening.
I trust you can hear me okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Teresa Alamein, 39, 11, Steam Mill Road. First of all, a momentary detour. I just want to thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor, for your courage with your executive order. Because a lot of lives have been lost and people I know to the COVID. I'm glad that the council supported you, uh, in the order on the mask wearing. We know it's a good thing to do that. I'm so happy that the city manager mentioned at the last council meeting, the possibility of ending what we all know as slavery by another name, also called the inmate labor. When I moved here, I first saw those prison trucks moving around the city. And I learned that those trucks, prison detail, uh, had people in them, no ventilation, moving about the city to do jobs for the city. Hundreds, hundreds of workers who are prison slave labor. When the former mayor talked about the haves and the have-nots at a meeting in 2011, I stood up and confronted her about the prison labor. It was late in 2011. She said, "We save a lot of money doing that." And I said, "It's not good." And lots of people in the room came up to me and said, "You're right, you're right, you're right." And I found out that many of the folks coming up to me have been living in Columbus all their lives, watching the inmate slave labor. But what citizens don't know is that every department in the Columbus Consolidated Government pretty much uses prison slave labor. I first encountered it face to face at the DMV. Prison slave labor at the DMV, at the tag office. There's hardly anywhere you can go in the Columbus Consolidated Government that you don't run into prison slave labor. They clean all the buildings, they are painters, they are mechanics. And I have the turnout sheets. Through an open records request, I got the turnout sheets in 2012. And when I looked to see all the different jobs they do, they run parks and recs, that's everything. And you know, you kind of get what you pay for. I made two complaints about the recycling location over at 22nd Avenue within the last few weeks. Garbage overflowing. I heard the deputy city manager say that some of the most complaints you get about garbage pickup. Well, on April 4th, 2012, we had a forum where the city manager came, deputy city manager Goodwin, somebody from, uh, Public Works. April 4th, the day Dr. Martin Luther King was assassinated, standing up for the Memphis sanitation workers. These jobs would help a lot of poor people in Columbus. Because historically, the sanitation work has been done by black workers, historically, in every community. So when you got 18% unemployment among black workers, those jobs could go for them. And every economist I've spoken with said, if they have the $15 million, they'd be better off paying workers because they would spend the money, buy cars and homes, and make it a better community. So look at the budget. It's a short-sighted way.
Ms. Alamein, I'm sorry. Your, your five minutes have, have passed.
Well, you heard me.
Yes, ma'am.
And I'm glad it's being, uh, considered to let go of it because it is something that makes Columbus look very bad.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, uh, next up, we've got Mr. Chris, I hope I say this right, Bree Alt, regarding a request for consideration of ideas with downtown development. Mr. Bree Alt? Okay. Next is Captain Joyce Dent-Fitzpatrick, representing the Columbus, Georgia Police Department, regarding a citizen review advisory board with subpoena power. All right. Captain Dent-Fitzpatrick is not here. Okay. Good evening. If you state your name and your address, and, um, and we'll start you five minutes right after you announce that.
Not a problem. My name is Freeman Johnson. Address is 3328 Marriott Drive, Columbus, Georgia, 31907. Mayor Skip Henderson, City Council, City Manager, citizens of Columbus. I'm not President Dent-Fitzpatrick, but, uh, I am the Secretary of West Georgia PBA. Uh, I'm here to speak up for our brothers and sisters in law enforcement that we represent here, uh, in the Columbus tri-community. President Dent-Fitzpatrick sent a, uh, letter to the mayor and city council members. I'm not sure if you have that document in your folder, the folder of readout. And if you do, uh, if you haven't had the time to read through it, please take your time to read through it. I'm going to go ahead and read this narrative, uh, off to you so you can understand what our premise is and what's going on. The Personnel Review Board is the current board that is in place for disciplinary appeals for Columbus Consolidated Government employees. Members of that board, typically five people, are selected by random pool of citizens appointed by the city council to sit on the objective body. This board either, either is to uphold the disciplinary action based on the, uh, department or the city policy, or rescind the disciplinary action, and give to the day or the monetary loss back to the employees. The city attorney guides this board on what they can and cannot do as a review board. Our point, the proposed Citizen Advisory Board, the CAB, would not be given the power to approve or deny disciplinary actions, nor will they be able to rescind previous disciplinary actions of a government laws enforcement agencies. We contacted the city attorney's office about the Personnel Review Board to get clarification about subpoena status. The PRB, which is, once again, the Personnel Review Board, already has the right to subpoena city employees on cases that are brought before them for review. Should they need to exercise that power, it's available to them. Someone from the clerk office will guide the represented PRB rep through that process. However, there has not been a need for, to utilize this process to the date. The Personnel Review Board we already have in place is not broken. It works. There has, uh, there's no need for yet another board to have a power as it is, uh, unnecessary. Imaginary power tool that would just divide the law enforcement and the citizens of our community. If the council insists on adding a CA, adding a CAB, I guess this would be additional one other than the one we have. We would like more, uh, retired law enforcement officers to be appointed to the board who have a, have been supervisors or involved in the administrative process of what management must do on disciplinary actions. The PBA still does not support the CAB having subpoena power. We will continue to express our position against this matter in the future respectfully. Once again, President Joyce Dent-Fitzpatrick, West Georgia PBA. Anybody have any questions?
Doesn't appear to be so, sir.
Once again, uh, West Georgia PBA, we're here to, uh, stand behind our brothers and sisters in law enforcement. Guess what? We got good people and we got bad people everywhere. And, uh, for the most part, it's all those one percenters that put a bad, bad eye on individuals, no matter what job or career path they may fall upon. But understand this, the CCG, uh, Policy and Procedure 220-502 outlines the disciplinary process. And 503 and 501 outlines other processes that are taking place, either for termination or other actions that are required. We're not trying to go around the process. We just tell our staff and our brothers and sisters, "You follow the process, that we can be taken care of." And it seems at this point in time that we're trying to put another loophole in the process. It don't make sense, uh, adding more weight to a weight that's already been sinking in the river. So hopefully, the council will consider before they put something in place and it'll cause more disruptions than effective management of a process.
Thank you, sir. And I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but your time is up. I appreciate it very much. All right, next, Mr. Byron Hickey, regarding subpoena power for the Public Safety Advisory Commission. Mr. Hickey, I'll start your time after you give your name and your address.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name is Byron Hickey. I reside at 532 Honolulu Drive, Columbus, Georgia. I'm here today to talk again about subpoena power. First off, I would just like to say that I'm glad to see everybody's doing well, and I hope that your families are doing well also. And may the blessings of God continue to shine and look down upon each of you. I'd like to start off just by reading a passage of scripture from, uh, 1 Corinthians 16, chapter, uh, 13 to 14, verse. It says, "Watch, stand fast in the faith. Be brave, be strong; let all that you do be done with love." So I come here today again to speak on this issue, and I speak, uh, to you today, uh, from a place of love. I gave each of you a copy of the resolution that was done in 1971. Of course, the consolidation took place, uh, in January 1 of, uh, 1971. And in March, on March 2nd, uh, Resolution 115-71 was done where the council at that time voted nine to, uh, one person was absent, but everybody voted unanimously that was there, to pass this, giving the existing two boards at that time, which was a police review board and the Personnel Review Board, subpoena power, not that they had it, but they was exercising, using the power that the council had. And the city clerk, uh, at that time, was given the authority to, uh, sign off on those subpoena whenever those boards needed to subpoena any documents or anyone to come before them. So I come here today before you to say that, uh, I know there's a real, um, issue about, you know, this Public Safety Advisory Commission, uh, having subpoena power. But we already have a precedent, this has already been set by council in 1971, that, uh, the Personnel Review Board need to subpoena someone to come before them or documents unredacted. All they have to do is go through the Human Resource Department, which is the liaison between, uh, them and the city, uh, clerk of, uh, city clerk, I mean, uh, clerk of council, to go to them, to her, to sign off on any subpoenas that need to be signed off on. So all that I'm asking is, well, if we already have something in place, and it works, and it's been working, and to correct, um, Mr. Johnson, who was here just a moment ago, said that this process, no one has been using this process, well, I, you know, I stand to correct him on that. The Personnel Review Board have subpoenaed people and documents to come before them. So, uh, if we already got a process in place, then what's the big fuss about this commission using the same process that's already in place that the Personnel Review Board uses? I mean, we are an extension of council, and we're y'all's too. And we all know that oversight is needed. And if we don't agree that oversight is needed, then we're going to get caught again with something happening when you can use this body to help you to oversee the things that are happening. And then that way, again, and I, and I say this to all my colleagues, we can't, this, this commission, we can't place anybody in jail, we can't indict anybody. All we could do, as an extension of council, a tool that you all have, is come back and make a recommendation to you all, give it to you all. And what y'all decide to do with it, you do with it. But we need to be able to have somewhat, something, some avenue to go about getting the things that we need. Now, a lot of people say, "Well, you can get this information through open records." Well, we know that if you go through open records, everything's going to be redacted when you get it. But if you got a subpoena requesting those documents, it won't be any redaction. They can't do it then, okay? And then also, um, in the current two, uh, well, the, the ordinance that Mayor Pro Tem is proposing is saying that this commission can get the, uh, reports of these incidents after the case has been investigated. Well, getting them after the case has been investigated, don't do this commission any good. So I just, you know, ask that, since we already have a protocol in place and the precedent's already been set, let us follow the same guidelines that the Personnel Review Board is following. And that's the resolution that you have in front of you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hickey. All right, uh, Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've got, uh, a few items tonight on my agenda. The first one is, uh, Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus Recommendations. You know that we received $981,000 in coronavirus, uh, COVID-19 funding through HUD for Community Development Block Grant. And so we're coming to you tonight to get your approval to allocate these funds to...
Motion approved from Mayor Pro Tem, and a second from Councilor Huff. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Any opposed? That passes.
Got a street acceptance, portion of Legion Drive in Lexington Hills. It's been inspected by engineering and recommended.
All right, there's a motion to approve by the Mayor Pro Tem, and I think I heard a second from Counselor Crabbe. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say no. Passes.
Under purchases, I've got a contract extension for Environmental Monitoring Services. The agreement scheduled to expire December 31, 2020. And we've issued a new R F P and proposal to do no later than August 21, 2020. And we need some additional time to get these reviewed and get it back to you.
Motion to approve from, I think, Counselor Huff. And I heard a second from Counselor Woodson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say no. Passes.
Got it.
There's a motion to approve the purchases, item B through F. Is there a second to that? There is a second. Does anybody have one they'd like to pull? Counselor House?
I was trying to second the motion.
Oh, okay. All right, so the motion second to approve B through F, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, Mr. City Manager, would you run through those, please, sir?
Yes, sir. B would be annual maintenance renewal for Cisco switches. This is an annual renewal, $74,258.46. C is the R G I S software license and maintenance, annual renewal of $49,298.90. And D is drum assembly for the Public Works Department. They, this equipment is used daily at the landfill to grind stumps, logs, et cetera. It's $42,720.37. And actually, and E would be a purchase for installation of automatic doors at various city locations. And these, E and F would be funded using COVID-19 monies. And this would actually allow us to purchase doors that would be hands-free opening and closing, rather than, as we deal with COVID, having to pull doors open. And we're using COVID funding for that safety matter. And then L is a large screen that we will use here in the council, in this chambers that we've altered for the council chambers, but would also be used at the Civic Center as they are having to do outdoor types of events because they can't do indoor events. They can do outdoor movies and so forth with this. But it's a COVID expense because it's actually going to be used here in the council, in this chambers that I keep referring to or wanting to refer to as council chambers. But you know, as people up in the arena or sitting way back here on the floor, they can't see these small screens and see who's talking and what you're saying. But when we get the larger screen, we would be able to use it there. But we'll gain a benefit from it, of course, being a COVID expense, because the Civic Center can also use it for events, and we can allow the Trade Center and any others to use the big screen. So that's why that is being purchased. And Mayor, I've got one additional update on sales tax that I'd like to bring to you at this time. Our Finance Director, Angelica Alexander, will come with a sales tax collection update as we deal with COVID.
Counselor Thomas?
Before we leave the purchases, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, ma'am.
Before we leave the purchases, do we typically approve the emergency purchases?
No.
Don't I recall that you have the authority to do that without...
That's right.
Do we need to do anything with this motion then that we just passed?
I don't think there's any harm, but you don't have, you didn't have to.
Okay. I don't know, Mr. Mayor, if we need to exclude E and F from that last motion?
We can check with the Assistant City Attorney, but I don't think it hurts anything. I think it's sort of a ratification of the expenses that have been authorized by the City Manager.
Okay, thank you. I just want us to be legal.
That's a good point. Thank you. I think we're good.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager, members of council. So I will just provide a very brief update as it relates to the sales tax collections as we end it, FY '20. Typically, the standard monthly finance update commences in September. Usually, July and August, we are posting receivables to the prior year. A lot of revenue that we're receiving in July and August is applicable to the prior fiscal year. So there's not much to actually report in the new fiscal year as we are in that transition process and preparing for our annual audit. So June 2020 sales tax summary, we received $3.24 million in O-Loss revenue as well as $3.24 million in loss revenue. This was actually up compared to June of 2019. It was up approximately 4%. And on an annual basis, the increase amounted to about $900,000 for the fiscal year. So we collected, as of June 2020, about $900,000 more than we collected as of June 2019. This chart here just shows a quick snapshot of the sales tax industry mix across the various industries. The blue line, if you can sort of tell, that's the blue line, the darker line, that is 2019. The gray or lighter line is 2020. You can see that most of the industries are actually up. There are a few that are down to be expected, such as the accommodations industry. That's down about half. But the automotive, food, and bars, general merchandise, other retail, those categories are actually up when we look at June 2020 and compare that to June 2019. So this next set of slides are just a summary, a quick snapshot of what's going on throughout the rest of Georgia with some other jurisdictions. I've sort of pulled out the ones that we talk about sort of frequently, such as Macon-Bibb, Chatham County. As you can see here, Macon-Bibb County, they experienced a 3.62% increase comparing June 2020 to June 2019. Chatham County, throughout the various jurisdictions, are down approximately 4%. Clark County is up almost 3%. Fulton County, significant decreases that Fulton County is experiencing right now with their sales tax collections being in the, above the 10% amount or range. And these are just some other jurisdictions within Fulton County. They have obviously several cities where consolidated government, so we only have one, obviously. But every city that's collecting loss revenue in Fulton County, they're experiencing declines as of June 2020 over 10%. And so the last one here is Augusta-Richmond, and they almost have a 1% increase when we're doing that same comparison. So just sort of to round it out for FY '20, overall FY '20, we experienced a 2.5% increase in our sales tax collection as compared to FY '19. Our revenue collections to date was $37,357,008. Our budget for FY '20 was a little bit more than $34.8 million. So that amounted to about an increase of about $2.5 million over the budget for FY '20. And that is the update, and I will be happy to answer any questions if you have.
I'd say we might want to do that again right now. I mean, we finally had a really good presentation.
Yes.
Counselor Davis?
Madam Finance Director, I just want to just ask you a question on that with the sales tax and all. I guess we do get, we capitalize on all online sales, right? I mean, we get that information back in a timely manner from the state? Or is that here locally, we understand how online purchases work?
We do receive sales taxes from internet sales. Unfortunately, we don't know how much that amounts to for us, the state. They do not have the capacity currently to provide that information to us specifically. We have requested from them a list of all of the vendors, businesses that report sales taxes to us. That information is confidential, but it does not have the actual amount that they remitted.
But it is included, or it will be?
It is included. It is included.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any more questions for the Finance Director? Angelica, great job. We'll give you the credit for that. That's good news. Thank you.
So, Mr. Mayor, that concludes my agenda, but I do have a couple of announcements. And the first announcement really just accolades to a couple of employees for their acts of integrity. Received a letter, email message from a citizen, Mr. Rick Heaton, on Thursday. He lost his wallet. And so I want to share his email with you. It reads, "I want to let you know that Edward found my wallet while working on Williams Road and promptly handed it off to a police officer. The officer gave me his phone number so I could thank him. I called Edward and told him how much I appreciated him taking the time and effort to help someone he did not know. When I offered to buy him dinner at his favorite restaurant, he said that was not necessary. I told him I knew that, I knew that, but I wanted to give something to show my appreciation. We all would like to think that most people would have done the same thing, and that may be true. But we also know that there are some that would not have made an effort or have done something worse. I don't know Edward, but he comes across as a humble and thoughtful human being. If you can, could you single him out in a group and acknowledge him in front of his peers and other leaders for this kind act? I ask that you join me in saluting Mr. Edward Carter for his selfless act and unwavering integrity, and know that we are proud of him and proud to call him an employee of the Columbus Consolidated Government. And we also want to thank Mr. Heaton for sharing this act of integrity with us as it is not often that our employees receive such accolades for their good deeds and good works." And so he wanted me to make sure that I share that with you, the leaders, and with his peers. And so I wanted to follow through with that. And then just yesterday, or maybe it was this morning, received an email from Deputy City Manager Goodwin from Steve Morse, who works at Columbus State University. Most of us know him. And it's for Shakore, S H, excuse me, C-H-A-C-H-O-R-E, Shakore Benson. And she also works, this person also works at Public Works. And Steve Morse writes, "Good afternoon, Lisa. I hope all is going well with you. I want to let you know about our trash truck driver that picks up at our home. I was in a hurry last Tuesday on my way to work and went out to the trash cans that were already at the street and threw away some Chick-fil-A boxes. When I threw the boxes away, I did not realize my iPad was in the middle of the boxes. The trash driver called my office that night and stated he had taken the iPad from the inmates who had found the iPad on top of my trash in the trash can. This driver went out of his way to return my iPad. We are very grateful to have such caring people working in our city. I want to ensure his supervisors are aware of his wonderful act of kindness. His name is Shakore Benson, C-H-A-C-H-O-R-E." I believe you pronounce it Shakore Benson. And so we're truly grateful to have him working in our city. From Steve Morse.
Counselor Barnes? Will you hit your light, sir?
It's a letter that, the email that I forwarded to you, you said you were going to mention it.
Yeah.
It was an eye-opener.
Yeah.
But I think, yeah, it was an eye-opener because I think that I wasn't here at, to hear Lisa's presentation. But the letter that I forwarded to you, I think that people need to know the scope of what the situation is. I didn't know it.
Yeah.
But you made it real to me when I got that email.
Yes.
And put yourself in the mix.
Yes.
Okay.
So let me just, Counsel Barnes wrote me about waste collection. A citizen had written him. And I thought it would be good to explain to Counsel Barnes, and obviously to you, and the citizens need to know what we're dealing with in terms of waste collection. And I shared with Counsel Barnes that the Waste Management Division has been hit hard by COVID, like many other departments or areas of work within the city government. When employees test positive for COVID or come in direct contact with a COVID test, a positive COVID test, I shared with Counsel Barnes, they must be quarantined for 14 days. We are challenged, we were challenged prior to COVID with hiring drivers because of a lack of competitive pay. COVID has complicated the driver shortage as it has entered the workplace, resulting in a larger shortage of drivers. We are currently short 16 drivers in waste collection. Supervisors are even driving trucks to fill in for the shortage. And that, this is still not enough. So coupled with a shortage of drivers, we're short on available inmates. We're dealing with issues where inmates refuse to work or want to go back to camp after a half-day, saying they are sick or because it's too hot, the heat. We were told that State Corrections would be sending additional inmates to Columbus soon. So if this happens, that will help us with the inmate shortage. As we deal with these issues, when we are behind drivers for yard waste, I needed him to know this. We're dealing with these issues, but when we are behind drivers from yard waste and bulk waste are tapped to help fill routes for household and recycling waste to keep these high-priority areas caught up. When household waste and recycling is caught up, the yard waste and bulk waste drivers will go back to their normal yard waste and bulk waste routes. In between, I shared with him all of this, the juggling resources. Public Works may get a call to go out and clean up an eviction where furniture, portion of belongings, and trash has been spread about on the street. Employees and other resources will suspend or divert from the mentioned work demands because they receive an urgent call from the mayor, the council, the city manager about the urgent eviction situation. So this means that the completion of the routes and the collection situation just got worse as we pull employees and other resources from the high-priority task of collecting garbage to go and deal with a landlord eviction that created an emergency situation. In addition to these challenges, we have equipment issues. Trucks are down due to age of vehicles, parts on order, and due to fleet maintenance employees out of work due to COVID issues in the fleet maintenance shop. And so these are ongoing issues, not just in Public Works, but at Metra and other departments. At Metra, you may or may not know, but we have been short as many as 26 drivers. 26 drivers short. And we had to run Saturday bus routes, route schedules on weekdays for several weeks due to the number of bus drivers out due to COVID and due to vacancies because the inability to hire. So I wanted Counsel Barnes to know that Waste Management, they're normally off, and these are immediate solutions that they've resorted to. Waste Management normally off on Wednesdays and Saturdays. They currently work six days a week. They're not off on Wednesday, they're not off on Saturday. They work Monday through Saturday. They work Monday through Saturday. Household waste will continue, has been a priority and will continue to be priority. Then recycling, and then yard waste and bulk waste, because we simply cannot allow household and recycling trash to be on the streets. But we can't allow yard waste or bulk waste to stay a few extra days. Yard waste and bulk waste will get collected, but may be a little off schedule. May be one or two days off schedule. Yard waste and bulk waste, but household waste and recycling is going to get collected because we divert resources to that, those high priorities, to get the stinky trash off the streets. So in summary, we are dealing with COVID challenges as well as normal challenges of aged equipment, shortage of drivers, and shortage of inmate labor. So I share this information to ask for patience and understanding as we deal with the COVID pandemic. But I wanted him to know, and I want you to know, I want citizens to know, the priority. I mean, we're sixteen drivers short in Waste Management, right now, in, in garbage collection. And I know that we're probably at least twenty short now at Metra for driving buses. And they leave, they go to Fort Bend, and they go to other places because they make more money. And then COVID hit, and, and we have people out due to COVID. They either have tested positive or have come in direct contact with those who in family, in their family or at work who've tested positive. So we are going to get the job done, they are getting the job done, and know that your household waste and your recycling are top priority, and then yard waste and, and bulk waste. And I told Counsel Barnes, I've got yard waste out that hasn't been picked up either. Should have been picked up Thursday. I think they got it today. So that's several days late. So it may be a few days late, but they're coming to get it. Just know that.
Counsel Barnes?
I just wanted you to, to do that. I didn't see the presentation, but I know all of us are being cold. I mean, all of us, every subdivision I have, they're behind. But what did you tell me when I told you that my yard waste hasn't been picked up in two weeks? What'd you say? Say what?
I, I told you mine has not been picked up.
His hasn't gotten picked up either. So I just want you to take the time, just so you can take the time and explain, because all of my subdivisions on Reese Road are, and I just wanted them to hear that. And then I'm going forward to them the email that you sent me.
Sure.
So it explained to them exactly what you just got finished saying.
Yes.
Thanks, sir. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. And, and you know, I, I think what makes it kind of tough is some of the scheduled yard waste pickups that are on Friday, when it goes a couple of days, now it adds another day because you've got Sunday in there. And it's, but I mean, they are working themselves around the clock, just about, trying to, try to get to it all. Counselor Thomas?
Mr. City Manager, I've had a number of people call me about this same issue, and one of the questions that I have for you is if your yard waste or bulk waste is not picked up, as a citizen, do I need to call somebody and tell them that? Or is this on a, you know, a regular schedule so that you don't have to do that?
Well.
I know that sometimes the citizen feels better.
That's right.
If they call and report it, but.
And so if they feel, I mean, if it makes you feel better to call, please call 311. That's not an issue. But know that they're coming to get it.
Okay.
They know it's there.
Thank you.
Yes.
Counselor Woodson?
Just on another subject, City Manager, I know years ago, we, we had instructed our employees that if they see grass high or they see something in the community to report it.
Sure.
I know with COVID and everything else going on, you know, so much to remember. But could we remind our employees to do that? I had a gentleman call me and made a complaint about the grass being so high on right-of-ways and, and some trash in some areas that were empty lots. And he wanted to suggest that we do that, and I told him, well, we do. It could be because of COVID, you know, people are busy. But can you reinforce that in your meeting, that if any of our employees see anything, please report it to 311?
Yes.
I do get upset sometimes with the community, and that's when I can get slapped in the hand. But sometimes people see things and they don't report it to 311.
Yes.
They wait for one of us to walk by, an elected official, or, you know, or someone to get mad, and then they say, nobody does anything. Well, that's the reason why we have such a big litter problem in Columbus, and that's why we have this. Everybody needs to play a little part. If you see something, call it in. We have a new app. Maybe we need to reenterade the app. You can, you don't want to call in, use the app and report that grass or that trash or whatever you see. But do like I do, just pick it up and put it in your trash can. But if I, the gentleman that called me, I told him that I would mention it, so I'm pretty sure he's watching to make sure I did tell you that. Let's again reinforce that if any of our city employees see something, to please report it.
Yes, we'll certainly.
Thank you, ma'am.
Continue to push them on that. And Mayor, you mentioned the program earlier, that for the first hand, we're going to be proactive instead of reactive with this quality control team that we've put together that will work weekends, and, and, and this is something they do have quotas on. They got to perform in, to a certain standard. But they're going to ride all over town on the weekend, and they are going to use the 311 app, and they are going to make work orders overgrown weed, structures that are in disrepair. They're going to ride throughout our parks, every single park, Cooper Creek, you name it, Lake Bottom, and they're going to be riding and looking for things that they need to report about that park through 311 to get action taken on those things. So it's the first time that we have taken a proactive approach in this way because we just didn't, the special enforcement officers, they basically go and service work orders, but this group is going to be doing something different. They're going to be looking for it and doing the very thing that you talked about.
Well, that's awesome to grade, and I think it's an excellent approach, considering when we've done community improvement programs, we rolled around, we would see people have businesses that they're not supposed to have businesses in the community.
That's right.
So this is wonderful, those people that say, okay, on the weekend, the city don't check, let me run my business out of my house. And the neighbors next door are afraid to say anything because they don't want anything to happen, but yet it's being destructive in the community. So I applaud you and your team and the Deputy City Managers, everyone, to hear the people's cry and make a program like this for the future. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Yeah, I'm really looking forward to the results of those efforts. That's going to be exciting. Anything else, sir?
That's it, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Madam Clerk?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. For the Clerk's agenda, item one is a resolution counseling the September first, twenty twenty proclamation session.
There's a motion from the Mayor Pro Tem. Is her second? Second from Counsel Woodson. Any discussion? All right, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, say no. That passes.
Item two is a resolution excusing Counselor Woodson from the August eleventh meeting.
Motion approved by Mayor Pro Tem and a second from Counsel Crabbe. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say no.
Item three is a resolution receiving the report of the Director of Finance concerning alcohol beverage licenses that were processed.
Motion to approve by the Mayor Pro Tem. A second from Counsel House. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? That passes.
Item four, this is a letter from Michael Gorham. He's the Chairman of the Medical Center Hospital Authority. They have selected Ms. Brenda Duramus to fill the unexpired term of Dr. Carol Rutland.
There's a motion to confirm Ms. Duramus by Mayor Pro Tem. Is her second?
My counsel.
Counselor Woodson. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Ms. Duramus is confirmed.
Item five are minutes of various boards.
Motion that the minutes be received by Mayor Pro Tem. Second by Counsel Crabbe. Any discussion, any of the minutes that you'd like to revisit? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Any against? That passes. They are received.
Next, we have board appointments. First, we have the mayor's appointments. Columbus Zine Works Commission and Trade Center Authority. Mr. Mayor is nominating Jonathan Payne to serve another term of office. He may be confirmed.
Motion to confirm from Mayor Pro Tem, second from, I think that was Counsel Huff. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Passes. He's confirmed.
We also have the Public Safety Advisory Commission. Mr. Mayor is renominating Mr. Timmison to serve another term of office. He may be confirmed.
Confirmation from Mayor Pro Tem, second from Counsel Woodson. All in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed? Okay, passes.
Next, we have council district seat appointments. Any nominations may be confirmed for this meeting. We have the Public Safety Advisory Commission, Dotho Edwards, Jr. This is the Council District Two representative. He is not eligible to serve another term of office. We also have Geraldine Buckner. This is the Council District Four representative, and she is not eligible to serve another term of office. We have Bill Ward. He is eligible to serve another term of office, Mayor Pro Tem. However, we have not received a response from him as to if he's interested or not.
Okay, I, thank you, Mayor. I spoke to him, and he has most recently been appointed by the grand jury to the Board of Equalization. So I will, do you need a letter of resignation from him, or should we just declare it vacant?
That would not be necessary if you just renom, if you just nominated another, bring forth another nominee, that would suffice.
Searching for someone now. Thank you.
Next, we have Julio Portillo. This is the Council District Eight representative. Counselor Garrett is nominating David Rowetter to succeed him. He may be confirmed.
Motion to confirm from Mayor Pro Tem. Is her second? Second from Counsel House. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? He's confirmed.
Next, we have Tyson Begley. He is eligible to serve another term of office. However, Counsel House, we have not received a response from him as of yet.
Counselor House?
He's decided he does not want to succeed himself. That's what he told me. So I'll find somebody.
Thank you. Next, we have council appointments. Any nominations will be listed for the next meeting. The Animal Control Advisory Board. We have the seat of Dr. Renee LaFrank. This term expired October fifteen, two thousand nineteen. This is the Vennerian Association representative, as well as Dr. Jean Wgasback. We have not heard from the Vennerian Association. However, Dr. Jean is interested in serving another term of office if a member of council wanted to move forward with making that nomination. Okay, we will bring this back for the next meeting for confirmation. We also have the seat of Carla Anthony. She is not eligible to serve another term of office, and we are accepting nominations at this time. Also, Carol Basset, who had previously resigned. She, we are accepting nominations as well for this seat. For the Board of Honor, Counsel House is renominating Bobby Peters, Barbara Pierce, and Robert Portichev. All are eligible to serve another term of office, and we will bring these back at the next meeting. For the Uptown Facade Board, Robert Battle. This is the Uptown Business Association representative. He is interested in serving another term of office if a member of council wanted to renominate. Counselor Woodson is renominating him. Roger Stinson, this is also a Uptown Business Association representative. He is not eligible to serve another term of office, and we will bring this back once we receive a nominee from Uptown Business Association. I'm sorry, Counsel Woodson, I, I'm sorry, I didn't, didn't hear you.
I think she said she'd have somebody next week, or next meeting.
Okay, all right. Thank you. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Counselor Davis?
Yes, ma'am. Just while we're on the clerk the council's agenda, I want to go back to, I know we were talking about the Public Safety Advisory Board, and I think that, you know, lately there's been a lot of focus on that, a lot centered around the Public Safety Advisory Board and matters. And, you know, I, I think it's important, I, I took the opportunity to look at the, the minutes that are provided to us on a routine basis, but when you look at those, I think that boards, that all, all the boards and authorities and commissions are important, okay? And they serve a purpose. But, you know, the, I think being able to remind these entities about their responsibilities, about their duties, about their authority, about the requirements. I, I know we have ordinance, well, I believe we have ordinance or resolution on the books as far as participation goes, but when you, when you serve on these boards, and you really want to make a difference, then you need to be there and you need to take, take the time to make sure that you're doing your responsibility, and that's extremely important. And a lot of these entities, I'm just going to call them entities, they have a lot of authority, and they can make recommendations at any time to this body. And when you look at the structure and how they're supposed to work, that should be happening on a routine basis if there are concerns. But I did want to make the point that if you sign up to do something, then you need to take the responsibility and go ahead and do it, and we need to keep a better eye on that, or at least pass the message on what the responsibilities and requirements are on these certain boards, especially the Public Safety Advisory Board.
All right. Thanks, sir. Anything else? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye. Counselor Tucker, welcome. Thank you for surviving your first meeting. We are adjourned.